Because all the original members are deceased, aren't they?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah, they're all getting up there in years.
Yeah. You good? Ms. Terry, you good? I'd like to call this Selen City Council meeting into order. If you please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. For those of you who are in the audience, we welcome you. There are copies of our agenda on the back table along with a sign-in sheet and listening devices if you require them. For the, I do want to acknowledge for the public record that the agenda was modified somewhat from the document that would have been produced and disseminated on late Wednesday afternoon. There was one item removed from the consent agenda and two action items added under new business, 25-19, which includes two separate motions, one regarding a transition team and the appointment of a staff position. At this time, unless there are additional changes, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved?
Moved by Gearba. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Harmout. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes haven't. The motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to excuse the absence of our council colleague, Mr. Seal?
Uh huh.
Moved by Councilmember Lesh, seconded by Gearba. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes haven't. The motion carries unanimously. My faux pas failed to acknowledge the, the office, the council members and staff members present this evening, so let me do that. From City Council, we have council members Gearba, Rice, Lesh, Harmout, Mayor Portem Dillon, and Mayor Marl. From City Staff, we have City Manager O'Toole, Clerk Royal, City Engineer Humphrist, the Deputy City Engineer is with us as well, along with Deputy City Manager Treasurer Cole. And I believe we also have the, one of our Assistant Treasurers and the City Assessor in the audience as well. At this time, we come to the first public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any person may come forward at this time, may comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but of course not required to state their name and address for the record. Please note that, please note which, which item number on the agenda you are speaking to. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items this evening? There are none from the audience. Clerk Royal, I believe you have at least one that was submitted in advance of tonight's meeting in which the individual wanted their remarks read at this time, and I think at least one of the comments is pertaining to consent agenda item 25-15 Downtown Green Space. Maybe you have more than one?
We have four.
Oh, very good.
They're all for 25-15.
Please proceed.
The first one is from Bill Gibson. He says, hello, council members and Mayor Marl. I hope you are doing well.
Hold on one second, Clerk Royal. My apologies.
Oh, the mic is not working.
Oh, just need to pull it closer.
Hello, council members and Mayor Marl. I hope you are all doing well. My name is Bill Gibson, and along with my wife, Linda Gibson, we own Fine Print Bookshop. I want to take a moment to thank you for the time and consideration you have been giving to the proposal to add a green space behind Murphy's Crossing. As someone who has been enthusiastic about a green space in downtown and who participated in the focus group leading the, to the parking lot number four proposal, I am very excited about this opportunity. It will bring a new vibrancy to downtown while signaling to current and future entrepreneurs that the city is dedicated to developing and investing in our downtown area. I look at other cities in our area who have prioritized beautification, and they are thriving. Dexter's Common Area is always in use when we visit, either by events or just families enjoying the space. I believe a space like that in Selen will be just as popular. As people see the space, events will follow and foot traffic with it. I also believe as a city, we can and should focus on more than one thing at a time. I understand the very real concerns of our neighbors regarding water in the dam, but this needn't be one or the other. Again, thank you for taking the time to consider this proposal and know that we as a business and a failing bucket.
Very good. That was comment one. You have four, I believe, Clerk Royal?
Yeah. The second one is from Jill Dernan. As a downtown business property owner and a lifetime resident, I am in support of the special committee taking an extra team, our wonderful together as a group slash city. I believe this will also bring potential new businesses, maybe even retail-style businesses, and we can have a flourishing four corners of Selen. As of now, I'm seeing the positive sides. However, it has the potential of building a ghost town with tumbleweeds blowing down the roads. As a business owner, I want people to stop in Selen, walk around, go in and out every door they can find, while carrying bags of goodies from each door. This would bring financial life back to Selen. I have had at least three people per month, ten years plus, ask me about an eastern-facing back door or even a deck patio to enjoy the sunrise and sunshine happening outside. This would be why enjoying their Carrigan Cafe purchases. With a new space being built, it would give more ADA and handicap, better access and a backdoor for the Carrigan. I would love to expand my seating and grow to become a larger space, gain new homeowners slash families. Thank you.
Very good. We appreciate all four comments, and assuming the motion on the consent agenda passes, that'll be an issue for discussion at an issue-specific meeting at 6:00 PM on January the 27th, which is two Mondays from today. That concludes the first public comment period, so we will transition now to presentations. We have one this evening, which is an annual update from the Selen Cable Commission. And if our guests would like to introduce themselves, and of course, we welcome them here and appreciate them taking time out of their busy schedules to, to share this pertinent, timely information.
Thank you. And so Ben and I, Ben is working on adjusting the sound, he'll come and introduce himself shortly, are honored to sit along with city council members on the Cable Commission and city employees. And I've also invited Miranda Owlsley to join us today to speak about our presentation. So to start, my name is Jaclyn Martin. I'm the Executive Director of Communications and Community Relations at Selenary Schools.
Miranda Owlsley is Assistant Superintendent for Finance at Selenary Schools.
And Ben Goodman, joining us momentarily, is the Digital Production Coordinator that has the bulk of this presentation. So again, the Cable Commission meets every other month with representatives from the city, the schools, and the community at large. It is a city commission, and it, we discuss program schedules, equipment purchases, and it, I find that it does a good job of strengthening the partnership between the city and the school district as a whole. It gives us a chance to sit down regularly. Ben, would you like to introduce yourself?
Hi. Thank you, Ben. You guys know me, Digital Production Coordinator. Nice to meet you again.
So we like to throw this slide in just to kind of give everyone that's maybe new to the franchise and peg fees. The money comes in from Comcast, then goes to the city, and then is distributed from there. So you can see that the split, the 44% of the franchise fees going to Selen, as well as the city keeping the 56% of those franchise fees, and then specifically the peg fees that have more restrictions to those funding and using them for equipment, then comes to Selen as a whole. On the next slide, just kind of do a, an overarching kind of distribution of those funds. So the Selenary Schools receives about $71,000 annually. This adjusts each time we get a quarterly check from the city of Selen, and so then the peg fees you'll see is approximately $65,000 annually. Both of them slightly change from year to year. The franchise fees basically is offsetting some of the cost of personnel. In general, you see lots of things that come on the cable channel that takes somebody to record all of those things and go to those things. So mostly Ben kind of leads that, but we also try to employ sometimes some students and things like that out of the video production, out of our CTE programs in Selen High School to get them a flavor, kind of gift them some actual work experience for that. It does not cover our whole program, some of the ongoing costs as well as the personnel costs. It doesn't cover that whole thing, so our community department offsets quite a bit of that for us. And then on the other side, the peg fees, as you can see on the other side, that as of 6:30, our fiscal year is July to June. As of June of last year, we had $177,800 as a fund balance, and so that kind of keeps its own separate balance and rolls over from year to year. And as those funds come in and get spent out, they kind of have in larger chunks a lot of the time, and so he'll talk about it a little bit later, but we spent a big chunk of it before and kind of want to make sure we have enough to, if we need to re-haul all of the equipment that we are keeping enough.
And as this is intended to be an annual report, some of the expenses that are, that will go through in the subsequent slides have not been deducted from that fund balance yet. So, you know, it's kind of a, our fiscal year ends July 1, and then we do this report in January, so it's a little goofy, but nonetheless. The first investment that the Cable Commission was able to make as a result of the franchise, or the peg fees specifically, is improvements in this room. This podium that we're standing at today, the sound system, the microphones, we know that those things were in need of repair. That effort was led by City Network Administrator Chris Shank, who's really able to speak to that more holistically than I'm able to, and I know Ben was really involved in that as well. Ben, is there anything else that you would add here? And then you also have the next slide, so feel free to go for it.
Yes, so we got the sound system approved at our October meeting, and it started coming in December over the winter break, and it's continually being worked on to get it where we need to. We're also going to be replacing the video system, so we have a more frequent stream going on. It's going to be hopefully the same system used at school room. And then you see the first monitor has been hung up. This monitor right here is waiting on a racket and electric to be done, and it's going to be hung up as well. School equipment investments, I haven't purchased anything since probably since 20, late 2023, 2022. Miscellaneous TV equipment, video production equipment, approximately about $3,000. So taking a video from the camera to the cable station, I thought we would include this this year. Ms. Martin recommended it. It's kind of a way for you to see the whole process of what it takes to get videos uploaded. So we film and stream an event. I take that back into Adobe Premiere in my office and edit it. We upload it to the Telview Hypercaster, which gets the signal to Comcast. And then we create a timeline and a viewing guide, and we finalize the counter. In 2023, we upgraded the TV station equipment. We purchased the Telview system to replace the old electronics system. The reason we made that change, I'm not sure if I mentioned this last year, electronics is no longer working with local cable access TV stations. They completely changed their motto, their, their whole business portfolio, and they're dealing with major networks like ESPN and CBS, and they're not really supporting us smaller TV stations, community TV stations. So we went with Telview, and it's been a huge, huge impact on my job. It saves time in uploading content, creating a lineup, to put emergency messaging across if we need to, and we can add stuff to the package that we have right now. So it's, it, there's referred to pro. City projects that we have worked on over the last year, we continue to stream meetings here, Planning Commission, City Council. We also do the Slen shorts. Those go up on the TV station. Sarah Massey does those. You guys have done them before. Create one minute, throw it up on the TV station. It gets information across to the community members. We do economic development video, which Al and I are working on over the summer. We're excited about that when we get nice weather. Rec Center promos, Sarah gets me those slides for the Rec Center. Sunshine's obviously a part of it, and then we promote what's going on at the Rec Center. And then we do parades like Memorial Day. We provide sound for that now. We, the sound system is a huge benefit for that parade. We're able to hear it from what I heard across town. District projects, school board meetings, teacher spotlights, performing arts. Then we do foundation for Slenar school events, the Hall of Fame, and then the athletic events. Community examples would be Stuff the Bus and Summer Fest. I did a video for Rotary Club this year for Poltiva, Summer Fest, Miss Selen, and then Social Services. We did a video for them this year. And then that's it. There's any questions?
Very good. Ben, Miranda, Jackie, appreciate it. Very good presentation. Let me defer first to the city liaisons to the Cable Commission. City Manager O'Toole or Mayor Portem Dillon, is there any, are there any comments that you'd like to add at this time?
No, just that I'm appreciative of the investment that we have been able to make, especially in council chambers this past year. I know we're still working through some of those issues, but those peg fees really make it possible for us to do that outside of the general fund dollars.
Very good. Mayor Portem Dillon?
Thank you. I was going to say pretty much exactly the same thing. The other thing that we didn't talk about, Ben briefly talked about it, was that we were able to purchase with peg fees, the, the portable sound system that we use for the parade, which also can be used for other community events. It's a massive system, probably a little bit bigger than we anticipated. Looks a little bigger in real life, but it's very powerful, and it's going to be a huge community asset, being able to use it for a lot of different events.
Very good. We'll begin with questions. I'll start to my left and end to my right this evening, so let me start with Councilmember Harmout. Councilmember Harmout, do you have any questions for our guests or for your council colleague, Ms. Dillon or City Manager O'Toole pertaining to the Cable Commission's activities of 2024?
No, I don't. Thank you so much for all the services and broadcasts you do.
Councilmember Rice?
One question that I have is, is there any space in jobs, life, et cetera, for community members to reach out if there was something that they would like to share on the station, if they'd like to do a little show or something?
They could contact me and could bring it up to Cable Commission to see if it's appropriate. And I, I have had people reach out before. Unfortunately, a lot of them are churches, and we can't get, you know, we can't put that up on the network, you know, anything has to do with religion or anything like that. But yeah, if people in the community want to provide a video, and we vote on it at Cable Commission, I think it's appropriate for the channel, yeah, most certainly.
Great. Have them contact you then, Ben?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Rice. Councilmember Gearba?
Just a couple. I noticed when you were showing the events, is it possible for us to have you do the holiday event, namely the Commerce, the Chamber of Commerce is holiday parade and so forth?
So this year, I didn't have the kids to do it, and I was out of town for cheerleading. I believe they had somebody come and record it. I'm not sure who. They had reached out to me last year, and I was out of town for my daughter's cheer, cheerleading meet, and I just couldn't be there, and I didn't have any kids available, but I gave them the name of somebody, and so they, I assumed they had somebody do it, but they've never gotten me a copy of it or anything. I saw it on Facebook somewhere.
Yeah, I know Tran always records it, so we really appreciate that, Mr. Lingmore, for doing that. Have we ever done a comparison of what we provide here as a community to other communities, namely what does Chelsea or what does Aetna or Plymouth do, and understanding how they correlate to what we provide?
Yeah, that's a great question that I have not dove into, but I'm happy to do some finding out, Ben. What would you say to that?
I've done some working with Ann Arbor. When I started the position, they actually sent me a lot of stuff. They wanted me to do it up, but it didn't relate to our community whatsoever, so we didn't air it. Apparently, that was a deal that had worked out with my predecessor, that guy who worked for me, that, you know, he, he had worked out a deal with him, and they contacted me through videos. But no, they air mainly a lot of their stuff, plus U of M stuff in Ann Arbor.
And we still don't really have an understanding of what amount of activities outreach to Channel 18 watchers or whatever?
No, there's no, like, the guy who installed our TV station equipment from Comcast, then the guy from Comcast, so there's no way of tracking it. It's a standard definition. So, you know, we would have to go to, you know, the new formats of HD or 4K, and, you know, we don't have the community size to afford that.
And then lastly, knowing that large balance that's there for the peg fees, I'd like to see if we can continue to support some of the things we're trying to do here in order for even the Planning Commission to be able to have the proper access in order to interact for meetings and such. So I know our Representative Janet Dillon has been working on that, so what if we can do for that? I am concerned that as that dollar mount core, if they need any, if somebody were to need some accommodation, so we can provide assistance. There was an ask to review some items, including, we did not have a statement about video surveillance, so we did add that, and just so that the public is aware that when they walk into the building, that we do have cameras and that they are under video surveillance. There's another suggestion about just adding a blood rule, which is pretty typical for any sports programs, you know, what are those procedures? So we did add that information. And then some minor changes to the verbiage. And again, these were the changes that were requested between the last time we came to council all the way till today.
Very good. City Manager O'Toole, I spoke to you regarding this matter briefly last week, and I suspect you, you have some additional comments or perspectives to share, in particular, based upon a conversation you had with Legos. So if you have any remarks you'd like to add for the council's benefit this evening, we would welcome that.
I would just add that Legal did not find any issue with the draft as we amended it following that first meeting, and since that time, we've been able to find other communities or really other facilities that have very similar rules. So we believe that what's presented today is very much in line with best practice standard and legally compliant.
Very good. Are there any questions for our Parks and Rec Director or our City Manager? Mayor Portem Dillon, and I'll jump to Mr. Gearba.
Thank you. I just wanted to kind of touch on a, on a point that was one of the topics last time, which was the use of the locker rooms and, and who's entitled to go into which locker room. And there were a lot of statements that were made here, online, and things like that, that I, I just want to be very fair about things and understand some stuff. First, I want to sort of remove the idea of predators, because in my opinion, predators come in all shapes, sizes, and sexes. To, to label one particular group as predators, I think, is unfair. What I'd like to do is move our conversation more to privacy, modesty, that aspect of it, and, and try to figure out how we can find a temporary solution that's going to help everyone feel comfortable in whichever locker room they're in at this point. I had an opportunity to tour the Rec Center, to tour the locker rooms, and sort of look at things, and, you know, what could we do as a short-term fix, a medium-term fix, and a long-term fix to, to sort of aid in, in our processes. And one of the first things that we looked at was, you know, where is there space within the locker rooms for people to have that privacy that they're looking for? Well, the Rec Center does have a, what is a family unisex, special needs, private room. Within that room, there are two individual private stalls. Beyond that, what we looked at in the larger locker room was, is there areas in that that we could do something to modify? In the women's locker room, and I did not go into the men's, it's my understanding, it's just a mirror of the women's, there is a smaller changing area outside of the common changing area, and that has shower stalls, bench seating, lockers, and that sort of thing. You know, what I was wondering is, you know, could we explore the opportunity to maybe put a curtain on that area? Right now, it's just an open doorway that goes into it. You know, putting a curtain to provide a little bit more privacy for those that want it, whoever that would be. There is also what Director Lambert calls a wet restroom within there. It's sort of as you enter, where if you're coming out of the pool, that maybe you'd go use that restroom versus the, the other stalls. And, you know, looking at, is there an opportunity to, to modify that restroom? There's currently two toilets within this area, this confined area, and maybe removing one of the, one of the toilets, creating a little bit more of an open space to make a changing room, putting a curtain up, something like that. These were just ideas right off the top of our head that we had talked about, and so understanding, you know, how can we make everyone feel welcome, feel comfortable, and feel that, that level of privacy that they need. So that was just my, my input on it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Gearba, questions or comments?
Just for me, it's just a couple of clear, clarifications, I guess. You have a new, the blood rule or whatever. I just happened to look that there's a similar kind of verbiage under gymnasium rules, where it says, any guest who is bleeding must stop play. Should we just have it the same rule underneath gymnasium, or is there a difference?
Well, yeah.
The protocol seemed a little different.
Yeah, they're all similar protocols. In fact, in all of our sports leagues, we have blood rules, because we do have our house rules, whether it's our basketball leagues, volleyball leagues, soccer leagues. So, you know, we always contain that within there. We had put that in the gymnasium space, because that's where we see a lot of, you know, I don't want to say injuries, but yeah, bloody noses or things that do take place in that space, which is why, yeah.
Yeah, I just thought we should have the same verbiage in both sections, so suggestion on that one. The only other one, because I always look at the fees, return check fee, is that the most current return check fee value that would cost is $28, or has that been reviewed?
That's the per fee, yeah.
I did notice one thing in the child, it's underneath the kids' care, I think, or childcare. It said something about non-members, guests, that they are not eligible for using childcare, that they had to go back and buy a pass. It just seemed like that wasn't necessarily needed any longer, because I don't know how you would come in as a non-member or a guest without...
So if you're not a member, you, you, and you want to use a facility and use Kids' Corner, which is our childcare room, where you can, your children who are ages 10 and under can play safely while you're using the facility. You can purchase a single-day-use pass for that space. That space is included in our membership fees, so if you're a Rec Center member, you have that opportunity to use that space.
So you can buy a day pass and then be able to use Kinder Care?
Yes.
Okay, I just didn't understand it on that one. Thank you.
Yeah, you sure can.
I apologize, Director Lambert. Did you want to respond at all to the comments made by my colleague, Mayor Portem Dillon? I, I didn't find any of those suggestions unreasonable, and certainly think that they can and should be pursued. I'm not sure you have, you're prepared to respond substantively tonight, but if you'd like to, I'd be happy to provide you the opportunity.
Absolutely. I really appreciate, you know, Councilwoman Dillon coming by the rec center. We had a really nice walk through our facilities, and we could see, it was this morning, and you could see the use. We had... morning, and you could see the use. We had water aerobics class that was getting out, so we were transitioning with that. We had some family members getting changed and looking for our family changing room, you know, to go out and use the pool. I think, a couple of my comments is that, you know, we want to be a welcoming environment for all. You know, that's really important, that when you walk into the rec center, that you feel welcome, that you are comfortable in the spaces that we have, and that, you know, we want to make sure that everybody feels respected. If we ever were to have a situation where somebody was feeling uncomfortable, our staff is trained to respond to that. Looking at those spaces, it is something, it's a challenge that we've had over the years, because, you know, when the facility was first built, just to get a little historical background, the showers were wide open. There were no partitions in the shower areas. You know, it was very exposed and you felt very vulnerable. So, in 2006, we had a major renovation. We were able to put partitions for the showers. We were able to create some better use of the spaces. But, you know, that's been almost 20 years, and so it's time to take a look at what we can do to further enhance those spaces. And, you know, in 2006, we built those family changing, you know, areas, which are really just gender neutral. Anybody can come use it for whatever your reason is. There's a lot of people who come for so many different reasons using those spaces. And I think that there's a great need for additional spaces and maybe some short-term fixes, if we can take a look and just find some additional ways to create more privacy. It is a bit of a challenge with the area that we have without having to remove lockers and install, you know, new partitions and make, you know, some type of investment. But I think we, you know, we were trying to look and be creative, and it's something that our team will continue to explore.
Very good. Additional questions or comments for Director Lambert? Councilmember Rice?
I don't have any questions. I want to say, first of all, I appreciate the due diligence that Mayor Protem Dillon has given us. I think that's why you're sitting in that seat. Thank you for...
Yeah, pull that much closer.
Actually, you know what? I want people to see my face while I say this. Thank you so much, Mayor Protem Dillon, for giving this the due diligence that it deserves and for looking to find ways to... I like that you used the term modesty, because let's focus on the modesty of it. I am going to take a minute, however, to focus on the community reaction driven by one particular community member, and I'm going to read aloud an email and an email response, as this is public information. So, the editor of the Celine Post newspaper, who happens to be in the room here today, sent all of City Council an email back in December that said, quote, "Just want to be sure. Celine City Council has no problem if a transgender woman flops, quote, 'her penis,' end quote, in front of women and girls in the women's changing room. The onus is on the woman mom, grandmom, to change the family dressing room if they are not comfortable. You're okay with this? Why or why not?" And since my response was not printed in the Celine Post, as I had hoped, I'm going to read my response out loud. "Mr. Longmore, I speak for myself as a member of this community and as the council liaison to the City of Celine's Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Accessibility Commission, when I strongly condemn any rhetoric that suggests members of the trans community would harm a child. The implications within your question are unacceptable, unwelcome, and unjustified, and furthermore, historically unsubstantiated. What is substantiated, according to the Trevor Project's 2024 survey of LGBTQ+ youth, is that 46% of transgender and non-binary people seriously commit, seriously consider committing suicide. And according to that same survey, LGBTQ+ young people who reported living in a very accepting communities attempted suicide at less than half the rate of those who reported living in very unaccepting communities. The about page of the website for your business reads, 'The Celine Post is a hub of information for the Celine area in Washtenaw County, providing news, classified events, advertising, and more information for residents and businesses in the city of Celine, Lodi, Pittsfield, York, and Celine Townships. If people in our community come to your website for news and information and find themselves reading the bigoted writings of someone who would even consider that a question like this is appropriate to send to council, do you think they feel like they live in a very accepting community? Words matter, Mr. Longmore. As for the rec center's policy to allow people to use the locker room of the gender to which they identify, I fully support it.'"
Thank you, Councilmember Rice. Additional questions or comments for staff? Any discussion on the motion? There appears to be none. We have a motion on the floor moved by Lesch, seconded by Harmout, to acknowledge receipt of the memo and to adopt. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries. We transition now to new business, Agenda Item 25-16, Resolution Number 25-16, to approve a contract between the Michigan Department of Transportation and the City of Celine for Woodland Drive East and Industrial Drive project. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from City Engineer Humphris and to approve or not to approve the resolution to authorize staff to execute the contract with MDOT for Woodland Drive East and Industrial Drive Street project.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Moved by Lesch to acknowledge and to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rice. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Humphris, if you want to make sure to pull that microphone close, and the green light, or maybe it's a yellow light, will be illuminated on the bottom. Yep, seems to be working.
I'm going to let Engineer Tro do a little bit of talking about this for tonight.
Very good.
Thank you. The city intends to resurface Woodland Drive and Industrial Drive in the 2025 construction season. To receive federal funding, the city must complete this project through the MDOT local agency program. Woodland Drive will be repaid for Main Road to Industrial Drive, and Industrial Drive will be repaid for Woodland Drive to the payment change north of Campus Parkway. Bids were opened by MDOT on January 10th, and we were pleased to say that bids came back about 25% underestimated. So, we were really maximizing our low dollars. One item to note is that we were ahead of schedule of admitting this out, which led to good bid prices. So, the low bid came back at $833,000, and we're getting $635,000 federal funding.
I'm laughing, because it was last week, it was very serendipitous that I bumped into the engineer as she was leaving the building and I was coming in. And it's been a long time since I've seen her that excited about bids. But she shared with me that the information that you just articulated, which is very encouraging. It's very positive news, and this is an important project, and I'm glad that we're able to move forward and take the appropriate action this evening. Engineer Humphris, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Are there questions for either the city engineer or assistant city engineer? Ms. Dillon?
Thank you. Just for clarification for the public, can you explain where the project is, the timeframe, and the impact on traffic?
So, the project is at the Eastside Towns North Industrial. In 2017, we paid Industrial to just by campus where the high school, Intersect Industrial, so from there up to Woodland, and then from the intersection, and then Woodland, from that intersection all the way to the west to Maple is the project limits. There is a map in the council packet on mail or online. The timeframe for that is, I think most of the public is aware, the buses have moved over to just the gray area of Woodland over on Tappet Court. So, this project has a strict timeline of when schools closed. So, construction's starting in mid-June and ending substantially by August 15th. And I feel like I had a third question that I didn't answer. Timeline, area?
Road closures, detours, road closures, detours?
Oh, there will be a detour posted. It actually is, most of it's like a mill. It's not a full reconstruction project, so there will be a lot of lagging and a lot of traffic, but there will be posted detour. I do not anticipate it to be nearly as impactful as our last couple major road projects. Those also included substantial utility work. As we all are aware, the main road project had an upsurge, there was 30 feet that was slow. This has kind of, this is actually more of a preventative maintenance project. We were just kind of milling off the couple, first couple inches of asphalt, putting down asphalt. Very minimal utility work associated with this project. So, we anticipate the actual road closures to be much shorter.
Fantastic. I mean, in that area, you've got a lot of industrial, obviously, hence the name. We will notify those businesses, because that's where their trucking routes are and such. So, fantastic. I appreciate that this is being done off cycle of school. Having used that as a way to get to the high school on a regular basis, I appreciate that it's not being done right now.
Engineer Humphris, can you reiterate, thank you, Mayor Protem Dillon, can you reiterate a point that you and I discussed last week? The fact that these bids came in under the estimate is obviously very positive, because that frees up additional dollars to invest in other critical infrastructure needs. I think it's important that the organization, and council more specifically, keep on our radar that the bids are largely a result of when they were posted and disseminated. Can you, you rearticulate the very compelling point that you made to me last Thursday, I believe, when we chatted about this?
Yes, I'm proud that we got this out in January, and that's where we need to get on Project Saturday, January, February, March. With a resurfacing like this sometimes going later in the season is okay. It doesn't have a lot of utility work, but you're just more likely to get better prices if you get early on the contract scheduling. You have more people looking to fill their schedules at this time of year than they do later in the year. So, prices tend to creep up the later you bid in the season, especially for the upcoming work. So, I started just a few years ago when I was, you know, stepping into projects, but at that time, I believe we were on a may bid for the, and that was late. I thought that was really late. So, I'm glad that we've been able to move it off to January. I think that's a very positive thing. We're working on that to do that with all of our several projects.
Very good. No, it is very positive, and I hope it continues. And I wanted you to articulate that point, so it remains on council and staff's radar for the foreseeable future. Additional questions or comments? Councilmember Giribaut?
Tasha, as you mentioned, that there won't be really a lot of utility work. There was always concern with the water main and the issue out there, so that is not in any way under the road or any concern?
The water main, this location is outside of the road limits. We are, we do have our capacity to line that water main. We do have some concerns with that water main, so just like we have done lining on North Harris and East Michigan projects, this is our next lining area that we're slated for. That lining project is actually a little more complicated, because it's directly adjacent to the elevated water tower. So, that's a project that we have to do in low demand times. So, we're ready to do that in the fall after this project's done. So, fall of '25 likely is when that will happen. We don't have a fiscal year '26 right now as far as the funding. But we're not, because it's all outside of the road right of way, it's not going to, it's okay to pay first. Usually, we do the utility first to pay back. But in this case, we're doing it in the opposite direction. But it's outside the limits, and it's a paving project. So, there's minimal excavation, I'm sorry, it's a lining project of the water main, so there's minimal excavation with the lining project.
I just wanted to clarify that, so that we knew that we weren't cutting into a brand-new road again. So, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments for either our engineer or assistant city engineer? Thank you both. We do have a motion on the floor then moved by Rice, or excuse me, moved by Lesch, seconded by Rice, to acknowledge and to approve. If there's no discussion, and there appears to be none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. The subsequent motion is 25-17, Construction Engineering Services for Woodland Drive East Industrial Drive Resurfacing Projects. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from City Engineer Humphris and to award or not to award Construction Engineering Services for Woodland East, Woodland Drive East and Industrial Drive Resurfacing Project to OHM.
Move to acknowledge and to award.
Moved by Giribaut to acknowledge and to award. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Lesch. Engineer Humphris?
I guess we need to comment for this. It goes with the project that was just approved, the MDOT contract to provide construction engineering oversight. I'd like to introduce Barry Gates, who is here with us. He's from OHM. He's, I'm not exactly, I'm not messing with his title, but like the construction project manager. He's been helping us with our last couple construction seasons, and they've been doing an excellent job. They were design engineers on this, so we are recommending moving forward with the OHM construction engineering phases of this project.
Very good. Mr. Gates, I don't mean to put you on the spot. If you'd like to make a comment, we would welcome you to the podium here. Not a requirement, but I'd like to provide you that opportunity or courtesy, since you were gracious enough to attend the meeting.
Questions? I don't know that I have.
Okay. Yeah, why don't you hang tight at the podium then, in the event that there are questions? We appreciate you being here. Are there questions for either our engineer, assistant engineer, or guests from OHM? It's real easy tonight. But we do appreciate you being here. Thank you, friend. Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion? It's been properly moved by Giribaut, seconded by Lesch, then to acknowledge and to award. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business, Item 25-18, Amendment to the County Election Agreement. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the amendment to the county election agreement, removing early voting sites for November 4th, 2025 city election.
Move to acknowledge.
Moved by Dillon, simply to acknowledge. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rice. I'll get you on the next one, Councilmember Harmout. Clerk Wood, do you care to make a comment for the public record on this issue?
Certainly. When we agreed to our contract with the county, it was a nine-days early voting, and we have it at the Pittsfield Township and at the LRC. It's where you can go in and vote in person and put your ballot into a tabulator. For the 2025 election, it will be just our city council and possibly a charter amendment. It will not affect Pittsfield Township. It will not affect Celine Township. And to have two early voting sites to pay for, it would just be burdensome, mostly, because we would have to not only run those sites, we'd have to pay everybody to run, to be at those sites. So, from here on out, city council elections will be on even years, which will be gubernatorial and presidential. So, this is our only year where this will be affected. So, I contacted the county and they said, well, we needed to do, Ypsilanti has already done this, is to just ask for this one year to not have the early voting sites. And it seemed like a good idea.
Questions? Mayor Protem Dillon, did you have a question or concern?
No, I just wanted the people to understand that we weren't taking away voting rights.
Oh, no.
There any additional questions for the city clerk? Then let's vote on the motion to acknowledge, and then we can have discussion or additional questions on the motion to approve or to reject. It's been moved by Dillon, seconded by Rice, simply to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a move by Giribaut to approve the amendment? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Harmout. Is there any additional discussion on the motion? Any additional comments you'd like to make, Clerk Royal? Okay. Councilmember Rice, please.
Well, I would just like to make sure that as this election that we're discussing comes up, that we tell this to the community, and this is, you know, where to vote, why we've changed this. Just make sure that we're communicating that with the community, but I have no problems with it.
Yes, and just so you know, we have over 3,000 absentee voters. So, most of our voters will be going out in the mail. So, but we will put it out there in our newsletter and via social media in our news briefs to let them know that the early voting will not be at Pittsfield and LRC, but you can still get the absentee ballots.
Any additional discussion? Mr. Giribaut?
Just curious, what happens if they accidentally do put a ballot at that voting location?
They will contact me and I go get it.
Thank you.
I have one more.
Please.
What was the savings for that, to move away from that?
We don't know, because right now, for like the presidential elections, all the elections we've had, we've shared the cost with Celine Township, Pittsfield, and Mylan. And it usually runs us about 3,000 to 3,500 for our portion.
There's no additional discussion? I will call for a vote. It's been moved by Giribaut, seconded by Harmout, to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to Agenda Item 25-19, traditional, transitional items, excuse me. First motion will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the January 13th, 2025 memo from Mayor Marl, and to approve or not to approve the establishment of a transition team to meet weekly with the acting city manager.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Moved by Mayor Protem Dillon to acknowledge and to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rice. Let me share some information primarily for the public's benefit, and then if Ms. Otul would like to comment, I would welcome that. And I believe Deputy City Manager Treasurer Cole also has a statement. "City Manager Colleen Otul will depart our organization on January 31st, 2025. In the ensuing days and weeks, Ms. Otul will focus her time on transitional issues and special projects. The City of Celine thanks Ms. Otul for her dedicated service to the Celine community over the past several years. Many important initiatives have been spearheaded since 2020, and a number of long-term systemic problems have been addressed. I am intensely proud of our city's track record in recent years. That said, undoubtedly, there are challenges that persist. To ensure we continue our forward momentum and address the issues our residents care about most, I am recommending Deputy City Manager Treasurer L. Cole be designated as Acting City Manager effective immediately, and that a transition team be established to ensure continuity and the appropriate level of support and assistance for our incoming Acting City Manager. This transition team shall provide periodic updates to the city and Celine community. Finally, in February, I will be bringing forward an additional action item pertaining to the establishment of a hiring committee and specifics regarding a comprehensive search for a permanent city manager. As additional information becomes available, it will be disseminated to the organization and residents of the Celine community. I thank everybody for their support and cooperation."
I just want to thank everyone immensely for the opportunity to serve the City of Celine. I know I'm leaving behind a team that is more than capable of continuing that trend of success and continuing to build on the future of success and continuing to build on the future needs of this community. I know there are a lot of folks who are ready to step up, and I am happy to do my part to make this transition smooth for the next person that steps in.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we've had a lot of speeches this evening, so if you could bear with me on this. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and the Saline community. During my tenure, I've had the incredible privilege not only to work for the City of Saline, but become a part of the warm and welcoming community that's here. Saline is a place where shared values and a strong sense of connection bring people together, and that spirit is evident in every corner of our city. Whether I'm starting the day with a cup of coffee at Kerrigan's Cafe or strolling through our beautiful downtown and seeing new places like Drop Top, and spending Saturday mornings at the farmer's market, all of it's given me a front row seat to the passion, potential, and dedication of this community. I can say that Saline is truly a city I am honored to be a part of. First, I would like to acknowledge the city council and all those who have served this community. I especially want to recognize City Manager Otua for her contributions to Saline during her tenure. Transitions like these can be challenging, but they also open doors to opportunity and growth, as Ms. Otua has experienced or has, excuse me, has promoted for the city. City Manager Otua took a critical challenge in addressing the looming administrative consent order for our wastewater treatment plan. She led the initiative for an $80 million rehabilitation project and successfully secured 13 million in state and federal funding. City Manager Otua also helped us, the city gained a clearer understanding of the condition and needs of its assets. Over the past two years, she has guided the development of a comprehensive asset management strategy. This proactive approach has shifted the city from reacting to issues to planning for the long term and the value of our infrastructure. Focus grant writing effort that she has brought has clearly delivered funding supporting critical projects like pump station upgrades, dam removal studies, and wellhead protection. Saline is poised to continue securing grants that make meaningful improvements like these. Finally, Ms. Otua championed and helped implement a comprehensive strategic plan to provide clear measurable steps for achieving goals. This solidifies the city's movement to be proactive and forward-thinking. As I step into the role, I will carry forward the work that she has started and make Saline exceptional while building our momentum. These accomplishments were not achieved by any one person. They were the result of collaboration, determination, and the shared belief that Saline's best days are still ahead of us. As acting city manager, I will lead with transparency, accountability, and care. My focus will remain on the people of Saline, our dedicated staff, our engaged residents, and the businesses that fuel our community. I am truly honored to step into this role, having had the privilege of working alongside such a dedicated and passionate city staff during my time as Deputy City Manager Treasurer. I personally witnessed countless acts of commitment, people coming in early, staying late, and going above and beyond to serve our community. This kind of dedication is the heart of what public service is to our community. This is a role that helps me get inspired every single day. And as I take on this new experience, I'm here to support all of them and also help all of us do our very best. Together, we will continue to make a meaningful impact for our city and for its residents. And to the residents of Saline, my purpose here is simple, and that is to serve. I am committed to listening to your concerns, addressing challenges with integrity, and building a future that reflects the values and priorities of this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate the statement. Are there any, happy to address any questions, concerns you may have pertaining to my memo of January 13th. We do have a motion on the floor then. If there is no discussion, there appears to be none. It was properly moved by Dillon, seconded by Rice, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. The subsequent motion will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the January 13th, 2025 memo from Mayor Marl and to approve or not to approve the appointment of L. Cole as acting city manager, excuse me, with an annual salary increase of $13,200 during this transition period, subject to final legal review and approval.
Move to acknowledge and to approve.
Move by Girbaw to acknowledge and to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rice. Again, I don't really have anything additional to share than what was articulated in the memo and the document that legal provided. Again, I would defer to the Deputy City Manager Treasurer if you have any comments at this time. Okay? Is there any discussion or comment from the dais? There is none, then we will proceed to vote. Again, it's been moved by Girbaw, seconded by Rice, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. And again, per my statement, I'll be bringing forward either our first meeting in February or second meeting in February, a proposal regarding a permanent and comprehensive, or excuse me, regarding a comprehensive search for a permanent city manager. We transition now to the discussion portion of our agenda. First up is reports, commission committee updates, and other announcements. As I indicated earlier, I'm going to start to my left and end to my right. So I'll begin with Councilmember Harmout. Do you have anything you'd like to share this evening?
We had a historic district commission meeting on Thursday. I was unfortunately not able to attend because I was sick. My understanding is we did not have anything to vote on. We focused on our strategy for the year ahead and our plan, and that was my understanding of the meeting.
Very good. Councilmember Rice?
We had to move our DIA meeting last week due to lots of illnesses to this Wednesday, so we'll be meeting this Wednesday here in Seehall Conference Room. And then Parks Commission meets next week, where we will hopefully be gathering some input to provide to the city engineer regarding the Spicer assessment. So we'll be able to provide you with some additional questions by the end of the month.
Very good. Councilmember Girbaw?
Planning Commission did meet. We accepted the new bylaws. The site plan that we reviewed was basically sent back to be completed. That was on Maple Road. There needed to be a number of other items and questions answered, so at this point, we expect it to come back probably in a month or so.
Very good. I have three. Just a reminder to the community that we still have a number of board and commission vacancies. So if you're interested in serving the Saline community, please fill out the application and waiver online and get it to the clerk's office as soon as possible. I also want to reiterate, because I talked to two different residents today regarding the two separate analyses that were done on the Milpon Dam, one focusing on removal, the other on rehabilitation. The public comment period will conclude on January 31st. So if you do have comments, questions, concerns, or thoughts on either proposal, you are encouraged to email those to our consultant or to our city engineers, and they will be made part of the final document that is provided to council, excuse me, sometime in early February. And then last, just to reiterate, that city council will be having a special meeting at 6:00 PM here in council chambers on January 27th, that's two Mondays from this evening, to evaluate the recommendation proposal outcome of the downtown gathering space working group who hopes to, they hope to, under the leadership of acting city manager Cole, they hope to wrap up their work sometime in the next two weeks. So we look forward to that meeting, and we strongly encourage any interested parties to attend or communicate with us in advance of the 27th. Mayor Protem Dillon?
None of my actual committees have met, and you kind of stole my thunder a little bit about the special meeting. No apologies for that, just to let the community know that the green space, community space group continues to meet, and the reason that we had asked for more time is we are still collecting data. We've got a real comprehensive process in which we are analyzing different spaces, and we just need a little bit more time for that. So looking forward to bringing it to the entire dais on the 27th.
Very good. Councilmember Lesh?
Arts and Culture will be meeting this Thursday at 4:30. If anyone would like to attend.
Very good. If there are no additional announcements, we proceed to the second public comment period. Under the open meetings, any person may come forward at this time and make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but of course not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? You will have three minutes once you begin.
Hello, Tran Longmore, the villain. I just want to say first, I'm glad I showed up today to respond to Nicole Rice's slander. If anyone, anyone who actually knows me, knows in a lot of ways, far left of all of you, I marched for gay rights in 1990, when most Democrats were still afraid to be pro-gay. What I disagree with is forcing, like DEI, for example, is a, it's a set of rules, it's a set of ideas to sort of tackle discrimination, homophobia, whatever you want to call it. I disagree with the tactic. I don't disagree with the goal. First of all, oh, second of all, fourth of all, whatever you want to say. I want to thank you for responding to the letter, because the rest of council didn't. And here's why I find that problematic. You guys approved this today. I'm glad Janet Dillon came up with some ideas, because we're smarter than just subscribing to these DEI policies that tell you what you have to think, how you have to define everything. We're smarter than that. We can come up with solutions. But all we do is say, you got to think this way, you got to accept these definitions, and if you don't, as Nicole Rice says, you're a bigot. And what I think about is 50% of Saline are women. 40% of them are conservatives. I'm not a conservative woman. I don't really care about who's standing up for them. Which one of you stood up at all until Janet Dillon tonight for conservative women who might not be comfortable? So we want to save, we want to help the person who's vulnerable at the expense of the women who might not be comfortable with it. Any woman I talked to said they do not want a man in the bathroom. And a lot of those women say, we transgender women are men. And who am I to tell them what they can and cannot believe? Personally, I think rare cases, it's probably true that, you know, that they have a condition that makes them want to express themselves as women. A lot of times, it's a medical thing. And that's fine. I don't care about that. But let's stop with the slander or the libel when you're in the Facebook group, and let's just look for solutions instead of making people define everything the way you want to see it defined. And lastly, I'm looking forward to continuing to press your buttons until the DEI sues me under your kangaroo court, your Human Rights Commission, because that's what, you guys have gotten insane with this stuff, and that's all I got to say.
Are there additional citizen comments this evening? Mr. Randazzo?
Hello, Sir Randazzo, Saline. Hello, Mayor, hello, council, staff. I've written my remarks, so I stay under three minutes. I want to speak from my own experience, though I imagine many in Saline share similar stories and struggles. I've lived here for 39 years, 38 of them as a homeowner, and I've learned firsthand how life's challenges add up while government too often takes a punitive stance. It doesn't have to be this way. Government can do more to truly serve its residents. Over the years, I've faced burdens, some ordinary and some extraordinary. Lightning struck near my home once, traveling underground and melting my city water line where it enters the home. The repairs on me, not the city. My sewer line is partially restricted at the curb, not yet failing, but when it needs fixing, I'll be the one to cover the costs. Hard water has damaged plumbing, leaving me to pay for repairs, just as discoloration often damages fixtures and appliances. When the Emerald Ash Bor wiped out nearly a dozen beautiful trees on my property, it left me with a $14,000 removal bill. Government wasn't there to help. The same can be said for invasions of the Japanese beetle, stink bugs, and hundreds of bats that once found their way into my attic. Dealing with that guano-soaked insulation, replacing the roof and sheathing, it all that added up to tens of thousands in costs. None of it came with the systems, from the system, my taxes support. In 2008, 2009, when the government-driven collapse of the housing market hit, I couldn't keep up with the taxes on my investment property at 109 East Bennett. After losing over $250,000, the city acquired that property for pennies on the dollar. Meanwhile, rising property taxes have pushed my current tax bill higher than the mortgage I first took out on my own. Inflation, too, has doubled my property insurance.